Okay, I would like to ahead and call with me into order. And for if we can, please address with a pledge of allegiance. And let's address the.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Ricky's not here. And so ahead and do roll call. Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Mr. Esco.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Here.
Tom Manager Hutchinson.
Here.
Chair, they were here. And Mr. Strout is excused. Okay. Minutes for May 9th, 2022.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for 5:9 2022.
For a second?
Second.
Motion, second and discussion. Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes for May 23rd, 2022.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for 5:23 22.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second and discussion. Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Public address to the board. This is the time and the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue of the matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, and the company institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion and debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and please be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom, but it can be into the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure participating, please try to attend in person. Thank you. Anyone want to address the board? Seamus?
Yep.
Sir.
Yep.
Hi. That's okay.
I have to keep adjusting. My name is Arnold Sears. I live at 98 Central Ave. in Dalton. Okay, there was a fire there at 92 Central Ave. Burnt four houses. Okay, they're starting to clean up the mess today, but it stinks. We got rats in there. I've been to the border health and they're finally gonna start cleaning up tomorrow, but it smells rotten. He lives right next door. All I'm doing here is complaining about the mess. You know, that's all it is. It's just a complaint about what happened down there. Nobody got hurt in fire, but left an awful mess.
Yeah.
But that's it, sir.
Okay. I know the bill inspector was down there, one of the health agents took a look, and I think there was some movement to get the resources.
Yes, they had a bucket loader in there today.
Do they? Okay, alright.
But the problem is, they were in there today and we got a big cloud of dust. A big cloud of dust. But that's what my complaint is, is just a, it's a mess down here.
Okay. What else is a town can do on that?
They should be wiping it down.
They should be cleaning it down. Okay. Is that a bill inspector issue or?
Should refer to him. I suppose somebody could talk to a contractor. I don't think that's anything specifically permitted. But since he did permit the debris cleanup, I suppose if you write personal to suggest wiping it down before creating a lot of dust.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Keep us posted. Yep. If you don't see progress or anything else of that nature, let us know. Yeah, let me know.
Be the thunderstorm to the house out of habit.
No, it makes it worse.
Oh, does it?
Oh, yes, it makes it even worse.
Do the diesel dust off of it.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else want to? Sir.
My name is William Brown, 88 Central Ave., on the right side of the burnt 92. I'm, we had so much problems. Number one, thank God no one got hurt physically, but mentally, I'm exhausted, I'm frustrated. I could not get anybody to help me and Art and the neighbor across the street. We got tremendous damage done, okay? The insurance companies have given us a hassle and a half. I called the health department, I called the U.S. Select people, and young lady there took the message and stuff. Called the fire chief, who, the health department, and the town administrator. Nobody could push these, the owners to get it cleaned up sooner. This was Friday the 13th, May 13th, that the fire happened. Thank God the neighbor across the street came running to my house on the other side, knocking on my doors, waking me up to let me know what was cooking. And it was the house over there. And I went upstairs, got my wife, got my granddaughter. We went out the front door and the heat was unbelievable. The flame was already up past the tree in the front of the house already. We went to the corner and the fire department took too long to get there, number one. They told Art they were there within two minutes. They were not two minutes. It was 18 to 20 minutes before Dalton responded. I mean afterwards, God, you know, God bless all the guys. We had, we had Peckham, we had Langsborough, we had Peru, we had Pittsfield. They had the two ladders up there, one in the front and one in the back, and they had, my granddaughter counted 13 other fire trucks. It was tremendous response, but it was a slow response from Dalton, which I was a little disturbed about. Yep, Art, like Art said, the stink is terrible, and they came today, they took the fence down. What happened was, they constructed a fence, the guy from Langsborough.
Conduit.
Conduit. They put a fence up to keep everybody out and keep the stuff in there. Well, the owner kept opening the fence and someone from his place was bringing garbage into the dumpster. I called and they told me, just try to close the fence, which I did, but they opened it again. So my frustration was with that because what they were throwing in the dumpster stunk even worse. There's a big mattress all of a sudden out in the back of the dumpster, and when that got wet, it stunk. I've got a lot of flies on my back porch. I lost my roof. I lost all my signing on the driveway side. I hope porch have gone. The two vehicles were, my wife's driver's side was all melted. It was undrivable. My truck was melted. The fence saved my truck some. And thank God my wife's gas fill was on the other side, otherwise it was on this side, it could have been an explosion. But anyways, you know, we have, we have tried every venue to get that thing cleaned up a lot earlier than tomorrow, but nothing, there was no, no way anybody could help us, no way they could push them to get it done. So I'm just, it's, it's a ton of frustration and there's still a lot of work to be done. And I can't do anything until they get that cleaned up and hopefully by tomorrow, or tomorrow, or whenever, two days, he told me, we can start working on our houses and get stuff done. But it was, it was such a nightmare, such a frustration and the anxiety, and I have PTSD, Art has PTSD, and I tell you, I can't sleep nights. You know, I hear the fireworks go off, it's, it wakes, you know, it's, it's tremendous. I fought a war, but I had a weapon to fight the war, okay? I could not fight this one. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
He asked a follow-up question.
Why won't they let you work on your house?
I don't wanna work on my house until all that crap is done. When they came today and, what's his face, he was operating the machinery and he was pushing the stuff down. My wife's car was there with the windows down, my truck was there with the windows down. Well, we got five blown out windows too that had to be replaced, they're boarded up right now. But she came screaming out because all the dust was coming to the place. And I purposely told the guy, I said, you're not gonna do nothing until you water it down, right? Oh yeah, we got a water truck coming. Well, they didn't have no water truck coming. So I gotta see tomorrow if they're gonna have a water truck. I don't know what time to start, but he said in the morning. And if they don't have a water truck, I'm calling the cops to stop them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, can I ask one more question?
Yep.
You mentioned Condy. I don't get Condy. Does he have the contract with demolition?
As far as I know.
And he's supposed to start tomorrow?
He's supposed to start tomorrow.
Be done with, scoop up the demolition and crack it off tomorrow, or two days?
That's what he told me, two days.
So by the end of the week?
There's a lot of work to be.
Yeah, once they get going, he's a pretty good contractor and then.
Yeah, but we'll see, we'll see what happens if there's no, you know, water to push it down, to keep the dust down and stuff.
No, that dust control is a big issue, sir.
It is, it's very good. You know, and we're coughing and sneezing, and it's in our house, it's in our vehicles, and we just wish that this, this stuff is gonna be taken care of.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, motion to open as a licensing vote?
Sure move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on licensing vote agenda is the Purgatory Road Entertainment Application for October 14th, 15th, and 21st of 2022 at Dalton CRA.
I would like to turn over the licensing items to the newly promoted executive assistant, Alyssa Machina, who's in charge of licensing.
Awesome.
We have Betsy Nichols here for Purgatory Road. Did you mark him up as a couple things?
Sure. Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Betsy Nichols. I live at 190 Cleveland Road. You guys are probably familiar with Purgatory Road. We did it for eight years at our farm. This year, we're trying to have it at the CRA, so we're doing our first go at a permit. So hopefully, it'll be approved. We're doing it three nights. We're trying to do it three nights this year instead of four, just because we have family obligations. So it's from seven to 10, pretty much the same as before. It's at the CRA in the woods, next to the CRA, so there's quite a drop to the land that we'll be using, which is a concern of ours. So we're working very carefully. We have switchbacks put in and we will have it well lit and adults monitoring it as well as the police and A and T on scene, like we always have them.
Is there any discussion or questions or motion?
No, I just think this is really well worth doing. I'm sorry they couldn't do it last year. I'm totally in favor of this.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Purgatory Road Entertainment Application for October 14th, 15th, and 21st, 2022 at the Dalton CRA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second and discussion. Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is Richard Hall's livery license application. Mr. Hall?
Yes. Hi, gentlemen. So I'm starting a new livery business called Berkshire Shuttle, and it's gonna provide service from central Berkshire over to Albany Airport back. And to do this, need to have a license within the town the business is in. And that's why I'm here this evening. Trying to get it up and running for the 1st of August, so it was a little tough being away last week, and you're not meeting till the April of August, hopefully, so that's why I'm here tonight. Happy to answer any question.
Is it just one vehicle?
Just one vehicle to start out.
Start out, good. Can you expand, huh?
Yeah.
You pick up any antrag people that ride in a burst of fire, they got out in Albany? Like 160 of them?
No.
220 of them got out in Albany.
They got out in Albany?
No, they got out.
Ah, okay. I didn't hear that.
See, only 63, oh, they're fine. It's not easy. 63.
Yeah.
Is the application in the folder, Alyssa?
The applicant, not, not the actual license, but his application is in.
Right, you're. You should have. Oh, maybe someone backed him. Okay. Okay, okay, alright.
Just one thing, the chief of police or the designated officer is supposed to inspect the car, and Officer Sergeant Bozella had already left for the day, so Mr. Hall is gonna come back tomorrow to get inspected separately.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for taxi cab livery license for Richard Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have, the board have to sign his license?
Once they get the license ready, yeah.
Not this one.
They have to get the license.
So the Dalton Taxi Medallions are going for, what, half an hour?
Yeah, exactly, Boston, half an hour. Excellent, $10. Well, good luck with that, Mr. Hall.
He already has the check.
Yep. You may see me on one of those, one or two of those airport runs. Awesome. Let's see, then next is Porta Via's entertainment license application.
We have Jay Bolin on Zoom.
Hey, Jay.
Hello. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly. Good, yeah.
I apologize, I'm calling from West Philly Run, actually.
No worries.
We're trying to get a little rested before the big push when we come back.
Excellent. Let's see, so this is for jukebox, live music band, DJ, TV, and the audio devices, which is radio or MP3 player, et cetera.
Yes.
And you got 60 capacity, okay. Any questions on the application, board? Okay, you have a motion?
Make a motion to grant the entertainment license for Porta Via, 645 Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the application for common viculos. I always mispronounce that word.
Victlers.
Viculus license for Porta Via's.
And that is pending Agnes's health inspection, so.
Okay.
I think she is planning on getting together with him this week, next week, and we didn't want him to wait until the August meeting, so.
Okay. And you have a motion?
If she does her inspection, I mean, can we issue the license and we go out there and sign it up to the office?
Yeah, if you just approve it pending the inspection.
Yeah.
Okay, is that what we did? I don't.
Yep.
So as soon as she dies, we get excited and maybe get in business. All right, thank you.
Make a motion to set the, a license for common viculus license for Porta Via pending inspection by the health department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Awesome. Jay, looking forward to it.
Thank you for, I do wanna say thank you to everybody. The whole town's been incredible, and Alyssa, special thanks to you. We really appreciate all the help we've gotten, and we look forward to this.
Yeah, looking forward to the whole day. Safe travels. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. And now, next is VFW's change of premise amendment to alcohol license to include outdoor pavilion.
We have Jeff Ross in here, who has completed the application to include the outdoor pavilion under their alcohol license, so they don't have to keep coming every weekend to get these one-day licenses, so.
Okay. Aye, all right.
Good, thank you.
Any comments you want to make on the application?
Just a couple. Basically, like Alyssa said, we do 10-plus special permits every year for different venues. So we're either doing that, we're looking to amend the license because it's a one-time fee and then we don't have to jump through hoops all the time.
True.
And we also have all tip-certified bartenders and bar backs, and we're looking to, you know, have control over the outside and have our own bartenders out there instead of what they were doing before, so.
Okay. Any questions on the application, the board? Is there a motion?
I just have one question. I'm totally in favor of this, for the record. I just wanna know, how are you gonna control people outside with beer and wine or whatever, not leaving in their cars with it and stuff?
That's why we're gonna have the bartenders out there to, you know, make sure they don't go out with it.
Okay, so you're keeping everything in the pavilion?
We, well, yes.
Okay.
We have the bars set up at the pavilion with bathrooms out there and that type of thing, and we will have our own staff out there monitoring, just like we do on the inside.
Beautiful.
Okay, great. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the amendment to the alcohol license of the VFW to include the outdoor pavilion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. And we have one more for you for the entertainment license.
Yes, sir.
This is the VFW's entertainment license amendment to include the outdoor pavilion. Any questions from the board? This is for jukebox, recorded music, live music band, karaoke, DJ, television, dancing by patrons. Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the amendment for the VFW's entertainment license to include outdoor pavilion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hear or none? Go to Mr. Esco.
So this would allow you to have live music every night of the week until 10:00 PM? I just wanna be clear, outdoor entertainment is seized at 10:00 PM.
It is not for every night of the week, but again, we have to get a special permit whenever we have the outside venue. So we're just trying to cover that so we don't have to get the special permit as well. This will not be every night.
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned for the neighbors.
Well, Dan, we should point out here that the VFW voluntarily offered to spend or terminate any outdoor entertainment at 10:00 PM at night, whereas the indoor, you can go to 1:00 or 1:00 PM.
And if I could, we do this now, but again, we have to get a permit every time. So it's not gonna be anything out of the ordinary from what we've already been doing.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hear or none, is there a motion? We already had the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Okay, Alyssa, thank you so much.
I'd like to say a special thanks to Alyssa, spending a lot of time with her, and really appreciate her valuable asset to me.
Excellent, thanks, sir.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Next is the American Legion's change of manager application for alcohol license.
Okay, we have Dan Lele here, who is trying to be the new manager of the American Legion, the new A, B, C, C manager. Do you mind if I?
How are you?
Good, I need to. Good, good. Any comments on the application?
We're just changing the manager. Joe Roberts is tired and needs to go, so.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the change of manager's license for American Legion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, motion to close this licensing board.
Sure move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close the licensing board. Number seven, the support of the 80th Screaming Eagles crash commemoration on Saturday, August 13th, at the American Legion.
This is then from noon to 4:00 PM. Perhaps the American Legion can speak to this as well?
Yeah, I'm not with the American Legion, but I'm helping out.
Okay.
Paul Nichols, 190 Cleveland Road, my wife was just here, so, but I don't know if you, did you?
I gave him the flyer.
Oh, they got, oh, okay. But this is another one that tells us about what happened. You know, this is a, acting, I mean, the wreck, 42.
Eighty-four.
Yeah. So the reason why I'm involved is John Rogan, he's from, how is it, Poland, not Poland, Holland, and he's an author of World War II story, so he's done a lot of research, and one of the things that he's done is researched this, and what we're trying to do is remember the guys who died, the 12 guys who died, the paratroopers. So, starting off at the Legion, they're gonna have a memorial for these guys. You can see where there's gonna be 150 bikes coming from Boston to here, and then they're gonna do the memorial here, and then from there, Dick and Crane let them have his field on Cleveland Road. You know, that big open field, it butts the golf course. So what's gonna happen is, a C-47 plane from World War II is gonna fly over and gonna drop 12 parachutes, jumpers into the field to commemorate the 12 jumpers that perished up in Peru on Garnet Mountain. So, and then they're gonna bring in, see, I'm helping him out because he's not coming in until August 6th. So Dick and got me involved to help him find a place because I have an Airbnb, and I, but I don't know if anybody knows Dick Dunham. Dick has a place, and we're gonna, Dick's gonna let me use to have those guys stay there. They're gonna be here for about six days or more to organize everything, but it's hard for them to organize it when they're, one's over in Europe and the other one, who is in charge of the jumpers and the plane, he's in Louisiana, Dave. So I think this is gonna be a great event. You know, it's gonna be bigger than, you know, we can imagine. So I'm looking for the support of the town in a lot of different ways. So when I was talking to Dave, who's taking care of the plane, and Josh from overseas, I'm sorry, Netherlands, that's where Josh is from, we were talking, and this is the stuff they need. He didn't realize we needed one-day permit for an event, so I told him that I would help him out and get that from you guys. But, and I talked to Dana, or is Dana the chief of police?
Yeah, Dana.
Dana, right? And, you know, if we go to her, then we would have to pay for police officers. So what I'm asking is that the town can help out and have them take care of the traffic control with the police department, so we, you know, don't have to come up with the money because it's, you know, the veterans. So I'm looking for ideas from you guys in a lot of different ways, because, I mean, the fire department, you know, we want some EMTs. These guys are gonna be bringing some EMTs and different things because the FAA tells them they have to do this. You know, they have to report, you know, their flight pattern. So then they're gonna, we're gonna have some old vintage motorcycles and Jeeps from World War II displayed. We're hoping to get another flyover with the Air Force from. We're hoping to get another flyover with the Air Force from either New York or down to Westover. So the thing with this, this all came to me last week, you know, and I'm asking him all these questions. Have you done this? Have you done that? He says, no, not really. So I told him that I would help out in any way I could. So I think, you know, a couple of things, you know, this could go on for a long time. But having the road shut off on Cleveland Road would be a big thing, you know. Shut that road off because we're, you know, there's gonna be parking, you know, cars all over the place. And there've been people all over the place on Cleveland Road. And we don't need cars there. And we were gonna park them up on my other field because I'm right up past the field. I have another big field that I hate. I was gonna park cars there. And talking to Dick, we can park cars across in his field that he has across the road where the vegetable stand is. So that's the gist of it, but there's a lot of other stuff.
Do you have, are you projecting like what volume of observers would come, people coming to town? Because it just sounds like it's such a wonderful event.
Yes. I think, you know, because talking to Josh from the Netherlands and David, they have done this all over the United States. And one of the things that they, you know, they picked our town, Dalton. And I thought that was great because, you know, Peru is where it happened. And, you know, we're gonna talk to the town of Peru and invite them, you know, for this event. But like you said, they've done it all over the United States and they want it here because that's the closest place from Peru. And they want, if it's a great event, they want to have it every year here. And I think, you know, once it gets into the papers and all that, I think it's gonna be mobbed.
Yeah. That's the, that's the coordination with the chief is all that kind of emergency control.
Right.
You know, just in case if there's an event that they need to respond to, just almost like we do with the circus, not the circus, the carnival.
Yeah.
Right? And, but I think what, I'll defer to board on questions, but I think it's gonna be, you're gonna get a lot of support.
Right.
And we'll get as creative as possible around that support as well. And then, but I think, I think working with the chief and emergency management on the planning would be one of those steps.
Yeah, and I mean, right now, you know, working with Dan with theirs, you know, at their place, right? Plus, you know, what we're gonna do at Dickin's Field. And then, you know, talking to Dan as a police chief, and then, how is that with the fire department? Is that part of the town or is that another?
It's separate from town government, town management. It's by the water district, but the chief of fire and chief of police work very closely together and collaborate all the time. Especially for community events, preparation of events.
So what I'm trying to do is, you know, talk, I've talked to him a little bit, you know, but trying not to, you know, get, pay him.
I, yeah, I'll defer to you on how creative we get around the paying people, but there might be a call for volunteerism on this one.
Yeah, it's, it's one way or the other, we come out of the police budget if we pay for it.
Okay.
It sounds as though the chief is...
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, she knows if I go to her, then, you know, we're gonna have to pay her through a budget, right? So if we can...
Well, it's a private event, so the payment would be going directly to detail officers who would sign up for it according to seniority or the system.
So then it would come out of their budget money?
That's what you're asking.
Yeah. No, I'm asking if it's coming out of the town's money.
That is the town's.
That is the town's money.
Yeah, typically, if it's a private event, the private event would pay towards a detail like construction or things of that nature, right?
Right, right.
Let's, we can think through this a little bit and just have those conversations. But let me just defer the board with questions. I have a couple more, but who else? Well, it is coming up soon.
Yeah, I mean, these guys waited to, you know, they, they're not, you know, they didn't know that you have to do all those different things.
We're a small town, we're not gonna have much red tape.
That's right, I know.
Yeah.
I mean, because, you know, my wife was just here with the Purgatory Road that we had over there. But we always hired the police department and the fire department for EMTs and, you know, on Cleveland Road.
Yeah.
So it went well.
You had some revenue coming in for that program though, that you could cover that cost. This one, you'll have no, you're not selling tickets or anything.
No, it's free.
Yep.
You know, we're gonna try to get, we're gonna be using the Boy Scouts for donations going around, you know, if they want to give money to the American Legion, you know. Because right now I've raised like $4,000 myself from different people because it's gonna be $8,000 for the plane. So I think we're, you know, I only, I've only been doing it for like four days. And like, you know, I'll be able to get the 8,000 for, you know, because they gotta pay for insurance and for the plane itself because it's coming out of New York State.
Yeah.
So that being said, they're all set, but, you know, then, like the Porter toilets, I, you know, I'll take care of that with, like White Wolf has been really good, you know, donating things. They donate a lot to, to the American Legion too. So, I mean, what I'm looking for support is the traffic control, fire department. And the town itself because, you know, and I'm just gonna go to the Rotary Club and, you know, see what they can do and, you know, Lions Club. Get everybody involved because I think it's such a great event and to honor our guys.
What do you need? Let me just defer, Mr. Lele, any questions to Mr. Esco?
Well, if we, this is a tricky issue to pay details of the police officer. If we decide to use the town's money to fund these police officers for a private event, we're in a sense setting the precedent.
It does get...
Around your event.
But it...
Carols, parades, et cetera, et cetera in town, so.
But this is totally different in my eyes. This is the Army. This is the, to honor our guys, you know. This is to make any money. The Carnival was making money. All these other events are making money. We're not making money. We're, we're gonna be spending money.
That's a good bait, Paul.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's the reason why.
Go ahead. Second, there's no escaping dealing with the police chief.
Right.
Okay, so just reconsider yourself for that and probably get down there as soon as you can and tell her your expectations about crowds and traffic.
So...
Location. So she can get a memorial service three or four years ago for a fallen soldier on the bridge down there.
Right.
Jeff Cole, the police chief, was totally in charge of the traffic, the road, the shutting down, the opening, et cetera, et cetera. So you have to deal with that level.
Yes. And I talked to her, but she's on vacation for the next two weeks.
Okay. Second, are you getting involved with these massive people with food and beverages? By beverages, I mean alcoholic beverages?
We're trying not to have that. We're trying to have food though, vendors, but they're gonna have to get their own license from you guys, you know, the Board of Health, right, and all that, yeah.
If you have vendors, do they have to get some sort of license for, just like you approved, kind of a license?
Yeah, right.
So you're gonna, if you have independent food dispensers, they're gonna have to get their kind of big old license from the Board of Health.
Right, and exactly. Because I was gonna use the football team, you know, like the Carnival, the fire department, so they can make money, you know, for them, you know, use the Dalton people that, you know...
And you might think about using some Peru people too.
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna go.
They have cops up there too.
Yeah, oh, I'm going. I mean, but I want to all focus on her, you know.
So you're gonna avoid the alcohol issue.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, your opinion, in my opinion too, I don't think it's, you know, should be...
Well, most people bring their own alcohol beverages.
Well, that's why we're gonna have the police there, you know. I mean, we're gonna make it clear. I mean, I better clean this up a little bit because it really doesn't give the time. It says, you know, we're gonna meet, but where are we gonna meet? We're gonna start at the Legion, you know, and then at 3:00, we're gonna, you know, the plane's coming over. Whatever, you know, but it's gonna start at the Legion and the memorial. You know, there's gonna be some speakers there from the state.
Well, have you thought about possibly doing some type of fundraiser to offset the cost of paying the police officers?
I, I'll, I'll do it, but I'm coming to the town right now. I'm asking you guys first before I have to do that. I feel that the town should be involved because of this event. It is, you know, it's not small. It's a big honor, you know. And these guys come all over the United States to do this. And to have our town involved, I think it's great.
We have some, we have, you know, it's one of the things that I know that the police department and fire do in different things is that they'll volunteer some time. I don't know if that's gonna be the answer though. But we have, we have a number of vets that are also in the police department.
Right, and that's what she was saying, yeah.
Yeah, so timeline wise, just one, if, any type of things that we need to approve, our next meeting is on the 8th.
Right.
Right? If we need to call a special meeting in the health, I think we would do that. We need to kind of post that $40,000 in advance.
Right.
Or just letting you know that timeline, if it can land on the 8th.
Yeah, I saw that because I didn't have enough time.
And that's okay, we'll help you through that. We'll get flexible and creative on that as needed. Mr. Bishop, do you have any questions?
No.
One, one suggestion I have with the chief being out for the next, you know, couple of weeks. You know, Tom, I'd be happy to carry this conversation to the chief and recommend maybe, or through you, the emergency management director starts the process of reviewing this. Would that be most appropriate?
Oh, I'm definitely gonna notify the emergency management director.
Okay.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Now that I know the scale of the event.
Yeah.
And another thing I just wanted to mention, the normal detail rate, I think, is now $55 an hour. So that's, if it were five hours for, let's say, 11:30, 4:30, that would be $2.75 per officer.
Yeah, you probably tie it a little bit on the front end, a little bit on the back end too.
An hour actually, that'd be six hours, like $330.
That's per, per officer.
Per officer.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I talked to Dana. She told me to email her on anything, issues. If not, the sergeant that's in charge, she told me to contact him and talk to him about, you know, what we're, you know, doing and all that. So, but like she said, start here with you guys.
Yeah, we'll get help through Mr. Hutchinson's office to collaborate, to coordinate that as well.
Okay. One of the things I'm gonna do too is like what we did to Purgatory Road, we asked the town of Hinsdale Police Department, Peru, and, you know, because we went to you guys first. Whoever didn't want to take it, and of course we paid for it, we went to them to get our officers. Because I think we're gonna need more than, you know, three or four, you know. I think we're gonna need quite a bit, you know, for that short time. Because, I mean, we really don't know. I mean, it could be huge.
Yeah.
You know, or it could be not that huge, but I don't want to take that chance.
Right.
The way the funding works is that we get a budget that's approved by town meeting. And so our budget for this year is now set. We're spending the money that town meeting approved for us to spend. We don't have an item for private details.
Right.
And that, that's a problem in and of itself. If the police department wanted to assign officers on its own, that would be one thing. It sounds as though she's unwilling to take people on their shifts and moving over there. So it really should be a private detail.
Right.
And, yeah, I can, I would bet that there would be people willing to contribute to that. But again, fundraising, you know, for that specifically would be good. And talking to the, the people on the force who are veterans, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what she was saying.
And, and, you know, neighbor in town.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's not gonna be, I mean, there's gonna, you know, there's veterans all over the place. And, you know, this is history right here, so it's, it's a big thing, you know.
It's a great opportunity for the town too.
It really is a great opportunity for the town, I think, you know, I mean. And, you know, we're gonna bring in some World War II veterans, 101. And then we have one right in Dalton, right? He's a, he's 98. 94, 94. Then there's a couple in Cheshire. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna take care of those guys and have tents and fans for them. And then we're gonna transport them up to the field, same thing there. We're gonna have tents there. But, you know, we're gonna have like, you know, some vendors, you know, to take care of some of the people. But I, you know, it's gonna be, like you said, short, you know, 12 to four, and then we're done. But I think in that time span, there's gonna be quite a few people, once it hits the Eagle.
Yep, yep. What I would do is notify the Gulf Coast of your intentions.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I'm a member there.
I see that being very determined.
Yeah. Yeah, I will, I will let them know.
Most exciting.
I've got one.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, what do you need from the Lions Club? I'm in the Lions Club and...
Well, anything. I don't know what they can do, maybe help us too, you know?
We got a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
So if you want me to mention this to...
Yeah, I would like that, please.
And whatever.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you guys done a lot for a lot of things. I mean, you helped us out with Purgatory Road and stuff, so I mean, you know, you know, yes.
Are you looking for money or are you looking for help?
Money, help, both ways, you know.
And I will suggest that you also work with Alyssa to get an entertainment license.
Entertainment license?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this we talked about, yeah, right, that's what we talked about, yes, yep, okay.
Okay, there's no further questions from the board, Mr. Wood?
What about the entertainment? You guys jumped out of the plane?
Oh, yeah.
Is entertainment?
Well, they're bringing in thousands of people to watch it, so.
An event license?
Yeah, it's an event. Think of it as an event.
No liquor.
Yeah, but I thought we already agreed. An event license is different from an entertainment license. You only need one. How about just an event license within time?
What's easier?
You don't really have an event license per se. We use an entertainment license for that.
Which is...
We have the Carnival, we do a little event license.
Actually, the entertainment license covers you if you want to bring in a military band or play some music or something.
Well, that's what we're thinking too.
Then, yeah.
You know, we're talking to the National Guards, you know, and so, you know, we want to bring in, you know, stuff like that, the Beulah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the singing, we need to sing the national anthem.
Yep.
Need some people. That's why I was gonna try to, you know, talk to the high school, see who's a great singer.
Yep.
You know, use the public, use the people from here.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Is there a motion from the board to support this program?
So move.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And happy to support, collaborate however we can and help you through the process.
Okay, so you'll be able to talk to me about the yes or no on the police? But I'm, I mean, for paying that instead of we paying that.
I'm happy to, to talk to the chief about that. It's her, it's her budget.
Oh, okay, I see. So she's not gonna do it. Okay, thank you.
And Alyssa's your contact for the...
Right, great, thank you.
Excellent.
Maybe you'll email me that.
What's that?
You'll email me.
Yes, yes.
Now to get that filled out.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the transfer station update. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, we got a, a proposed contract from the SOA the Thursday before July, which was pretty much as late as it could be. We couldn't actually sign the contract or... I just today got a contract that we can offer them that actually covers the town for what we need to be covered for. So that's still ongoing, but we're, we're going on kind of a handshake for a month-to-month agreement right now with the, with the numbers that they proposed. The numbers that they proposed were considerably higher than we expected for a number of reasons. The cost of fuel is up. They are not looking at having Pittsfield plant open anytime soon. And we have to assume it's not gonna be open for the next year. So they're gonna be trucking things either to Vermont or New York or even further than the two plants that they're now trucking them to, one of which generally stops accepting waste around 10:00 in the morning because they're full. They've, they've reached capacity. So this is not just our problem, this is everybody's problem around here. Unfortunately, it's driving up costs substantially. And, you know, they're just doing their job by projecting what they think they're actually gonna need to, to maintain their business. What that means though is that what we had set aside was woefully inadequate. There's another reason as well, and that is that in all the talk about offsetting the expenses with revenues, I did not include the full expenses that were necessary in the appropriation. Even though the revenues will balance out the expenses when we set the tax rate, we still need to include the full amount for the expenses in the budget because they're two completely separate pockets in town finance. And I appreciate that more now than I ever have. But what that means is that the numbers that I presented were the numbers balanced off by revenues and we can't set the budget that way. So unfortunately, we're gonna have to go back and ask for more money from town meeting. And I anticipate requesting a special town meeting in late summer to do that. The number that we came up with that we're, that we'll need to ask for is $124,724. That said, our estimated income is still somewhere around $190,000. But we don't get to apply that to the expense until we set the tax rate. We don't get to apply it in the budget. So we have to appropriate the entire amount that it takes to run the transfer station and not subtract out the revenue from it. It won't hit the tax rate as hard. I do, I do have that there's a, we're working now with an approximately $50,000, $51,000 of unanticipated expenses over revenues. Before we got the numbers from them, we were expecting a small amount of, we were expecting it in the black. And now we're no longer expecting that. But we have to see how it shakes out in the region over the next year because if they open up Pittsfield early, things will get easier. You know, if they have to start now shipping to, close to Canada, things will get more difficult. have to start now shipping to close to Canada, things will get more difficult. So, that's, I think, what they're anticipating as a worst-case scenario because they have to continue as a business. So, that's, that's the bad news. And, uh, again, I, it, we, because we would like to sign a contract with them because this is a major deal, uh, we need the, uh, appropriation in the budget to sign the contract. We can't sign a contract that we don't have the money for. So, that's why we need a special Town Meeting for that. Uh, that said, there were a couple of other things we might be able to use a special Town Meeting for. I expect the bids for Division Road to come in, um, next week. We'll know whether that's above our eight hundred thousand dollar budget or not. So, if we need to make something up for that, we can. We'll also have numbers for the town renovation, and you guys can choose an option, and we'll know, uh, whether we need to ask for additional authorization for borrowing for that. So, there are a number of reasons that we might be able to use a special Town Meeting other than this, but this is really the driving factor because we need to appropriate the entire expense. Again, that does get offset from the tax rate when we set it because anticipated revenues are used in setting the tax rate. But we still have to include it in the appropriation.
Any questions?
If the hundred and twenty-four thousand was, instead of being subsidized by the town at the transfer station, instead it was passed out to the ratepayers, to seven hundred people that buy stickers, how much would it be per sticker purchase? Uh, we're seven hundred into a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Well, then there's bags, uh...
No, just, you have to calculate it. Yeah, just, if I, a hundred and twenty-four thousand by seven hundred.
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, if we actually pass the cost of running that transfer station out to the sticker buyers, it would be a hundred and seventy-seven dollars more.
Or...
Well, it's actually, it's up.
But we are getting revenue from it.
Yep, yep, we are, but we're not gonna get all the revenue that was spent.
Yeah, so it's more like fifty thousand.
So, you're at fifty, you're at a fifty thousand loss right now, is, is the updated report.
Yeah, if you look at it from those terms, look at the, the deficit essentially between revenue and expenses, and that's our delta.
You know, the, the deficit is largely a function of the increased fuel prices and they're having to bet on, you know...
Gas bill?
To the median board.
Yeah.
Take those all over.
So, more like eighty.
For Pittsfield's is, or it isn't necessarily going there, but...
Yeah.
Could change it.
So, that's, um, that's where we are with the transfer station.
Well, it's too late to increase the prices and people who purchased stickers for all year at this point.
Yeah.
With the expectation that that was the price. I feel like we're, uh, gonna have to operate this way for one year before we can put any price increases forward. Probably could talk about increasing the bag, for bag cost.
Um, we could, again, um...
But, you know.
I, I would, I would caution against doing anything before we have at least six months of data in from the transfer station to know how it's going, you know, to get a better idea from, uh, our Haller, uh, what their plans are, how their plans are proceeding, you know, what we can look forward to in FY twenty-four. Uh, so that's...
The deficit, that's, I think the committee agreed that we should really sit tight for the first year and see exactly what we're doing and how the situation in Pittsfield develops.
Yeah.
If they're actually gonna build a, uh, transfer station down there, a regional transfer station, or what they're gonna do.
And, you know, I, I would have preferred to get the contract proposal before the last few days in Jim, so that we could have planned. But, um, despite asking during the budget process, um, they weren't ready to do that, and I can see why, because they were waiting to see how Pittsfield turned out, you know? Um, so that's kind of the luck of the draw as far as that goes.
Uh, is there a recommendation from the finance committee on this yet either? Have they reviewed this?
Um, no, this is the first time I've come up with the numbers, so I, I, you know, I'll be, I'll be taking to them as well because they're gonna have to be involved in anything in Town Meeting.
Yeah, I don't know what the procedures are, whether or not the free cash can fund this so you can move forward in the contract and then balance out the end. I don't, I don't know. Cause you're, you're waiting for, you're waiting for Town Meeting to actually engage in a contract.
It, it... Well, Town Meeting would have free cash.
They would, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And, and I think, you know, it, it is important to move it into the budget so that we can start from there next year and, and adjust from where reality is.
Yep, agree. Okay, any other questions on the transfer station update?
I think everything, you won't move very well over there. Very well. Seems.
I would agree with that. This is unfortunate, but you can certainly see the increase in fuel costs would be one of the primary drivers, and then the closure of Pittsfield probably even more so. And then, if you're traveling a hundred and fifty, two hundred miles to take the trash out.
Wonder how you do the math.
Or, yeah, with all the...
Two hundred and eighty, yeah, one way.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
It, it is, it is what it is.
I was trying not to say that, but, yes.
You were told not to say that, well...
No, no, I, I was trying.
Oh, you were trying, yeah, yeah. You don't have to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Hall has a question?
Yeah, just a quick thing, nothing to do specifically now, but I raise this with the waste committee. Are we looking as a town to get together with the other towns within Berkshire County? As it's not just our problem, it's everyone's problem. You know, when there's a group maybe for Berkshire planning, it, it might be something worth looking at. So, uh, we all talk as one voice, just...
Yeah, if you have to.
Yeah. Well, one thing we are doing in that vein is applying for a grant that would allow us to be the drop-off point for all of northern Berkshire County for mattresses, which starting in November are gonna have to be recycled. We won't be able to throw them away. So, we're looking at receipt, we're looking at a grant to have a big box to store mattresses, and we'll be able to charge all of northern Berkshire County for mattresses, and we will be the drop-off point and...
And it's a new revenue line.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah. So, we're, we're, we're starting the thing in those terms.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hall.
Um, any other questions on the transfer station update?
When, uh, are you thinking for the special Town Meeting? Is that, do you have a date in mind at this point?
Uh, I do, um, and I'm hoping for, uh, Monday, August twenty-ninth. That would allow the word, um, you'll see that there's a proposal for an extra, um, select board meeting to deal with police regionalization, uh, to meet with the police regionalization consultant on July twenty-sixth. I was thinking that I could bring a proposed, you know, a draft special Town Meeting warrant at that meeting that we could finalize in the August eighth meeting. That would give time for, uh, the meeting to be posted for August twenty-ninth.
Could blame it, could...
It, it'll, it'll squeeze the, the Town Purse Office a little bit, uh, because they've, uh, primary coming up in early.
No, it's, it's twenty-sixth of July. This proposed meeting is a Wednesday.
That's August.
Why, twenty-sixth is a Wednesday?
Did you say August twenty, or July?
No, the, the police re, 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 they should be...
Oh, I'm sorry, July.
He was talking, okay. Town Propose bringing initial business, you know, uh, proposed draft of agenda for the proposed meeting and the twenty-ninth of July.
So, it's, it's, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, Tuesday, yeah. I knew it was the month. I, I apologize.
Yeah. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at least, yeah. And that's kind of matching this future thing.
I think it's any, any, you can see everybody can figure it out.
Yes, yes.
Melissa, can you do a favor and just send an email on these dates so we all have them? So, cause I know, I may lose it, so I'm asking myself, but send it to the rest of the group. Awesome, anything else on the transfer station? Care to hear none? Uh, number nine, preliminary report on streetscape, uh, data.
If you thought the report on the transfer station was bad, just wait for this one.
Oh, we standing up for this one? No, it's a handout. You're in trouble now, ladies.
It's two handouts.
He's, that's how I answer for you. I never seen him stand up giving a handout, so...
Pavement condition index.
Okay. Well, it's data. Here we go.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Hall, would you like to see a copy since you're in the audience?
Wow. So...
Do you have another one for Mr. Hall?
Oh, sorry. Yes, uh, this is all preliminary. Just had Zoom meeting, um, on Thursday with the streetscape people. Uh, this is part of the preliminary, um, PowerPoint that we got. Comes with a program. Bud has access to the program and has gotten on. Um, I am not. Uh, but there is, there's an extraordinary richness of detail that we have available to us to show us just how bad it is. Uh, the, uh, fellow from Streetscan said the average town that he, that they go through and, and work with, uh, comes out with a score of about sixty, um, which is in the fair range, a little low in the fair range, um, heading towards poor. Uh, our overall score was forty-eight, um, which is in the poor condition. Um, about, about, uh, a little over the middle of the poor condition. Uh, half of our roads are either in very poor or serious condition. Uh, and this is, this is looking at, uh, I think, six different, um, waves in which pavement fails. Uh, there's your, uh, longitudinal cracking, there's your alligator cracking, there's your other kinds of cracking that happens to pavement. Uh, and they go through and they, they went over all the paved roads in town with a special car back in April and photographed, uh, with this program, we can see every three feet of every paved road in town and what square. And, and we got a, uh, a number of manholes per second. They, they did it per second, which is, well, one road from an intersection with one road, uh, to an intersection with another road. So, there are, there are three hundred and sixty-five segments that they did in town. And, uh, then there's the repair costs. Um, so for the worst, um, the worst roads, which is a score of forty or below, that's very poor or serious, that's half of our roads. Uh, they recommend reconstruction as the repair strategy as opposed to rehabilitation, uh, which is more million, right, reconstructions will be rebuilt in the road because it's, it's that bad. And, um, half the roads in town would cost nineteen point two million dollars to, uh, reconstruct. And we have, uh, a little more, uh, data. I'll, I'll just read this bit from my update because I, I started writing in my update, and then, then we got the, um, you know, the PowerPoint and all that. Um, there are a hundred and thirty-four road segments with a score of under forty out of a hundred. Um, and that's...
Sorry, a hundred and thirty-four road segments under forty?
Yeah, under a score of forty, which is, um, is, these, these scores here.
Yep.
So, below four, either very poor or...
And that's, uh, three hundred and sixty-five segments?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they vary in length, of course, because the different, the distance of intersection.
Sure.
And, and of course, in reconstruction, you, you, if there were one road that were bad, if it had two segments that were bad and one was kind of sort of bad, you wouldn't skip the middle, you'd do the whole road. So, um, the, the practicality is maybe would be, uh, more or less more expensive than this. Um, for just the twenty-seven road segments under thirty, the estimated repair cost is about two point six million. So, we can, we can do twenty-seven road segments for, um, more than we got in all of the area funding. So, that's, uh, kind of silvering there. And I end up by saying, the highway superintendent is working with the list generated to prioritize work based on not only road condition, but also traffic volume and other relevant factors, for example, associated culvert or drainage. So, if we're doing one place, we may also wanna do culverts and drains on that as well, bringing up the price a little bit. And so, his, his priority has to do with a road may be, two roads may be equally bad, but one is much more heavily traveled than another. So, you would obviously do the one much more heavily traveled first. So, that's, um, the brief report, the preliminary report on streetscape data. Um, we do have all of the three hundred and sixty-five segments, and, uh, we're combing through that to see what the best strategy is. We've got maps with the color coding. We've got maps with the, this is this problem and that's that problem, and they're all problems lined up all the way along the roads. But it's, um, it bears out what we've been hearing from residents, that the roads are not, uh, up to speed. Uh, but it's really daunting to think about the estimated cost because these are incurring dollars.
Well, yeah. Well, I, my, my gut reaction is two things. One is almost like a public meeting, maybe towards our Town Meeting, the state of the state of road conditions. That's one. So, everybody has the same awareness of what exactly we're looking at, and is a good prioritization of roads. And we may or may not have a full strategy at that time, but at least an awareness of that. And also the ability to share this data with our public officials at the state level.
Oh, yeah.
Cause I, I, I love it. I've always been a fan of this program when it was first introduced a couple of years ago. I'm glad we did it because now the data's telling us what, you know, we, we probably had some understanding of it, but this really clarifies or gives it to us crystal clear. Um, and then be able then take the necessary, necessary steps forward of what we may need to do or push the state or the feds in, along in some type of funding strategy. I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but we're certainly not gonna solve a nineteen million dollar problem.
No.
Anytime.
Right.
It's not a hard budget.
No.
No.
It's just, it's an entire year's...
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, we just put it on.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about is that special Town Meeting. I think we'll get a lot of attendance in this, in this topic. If, if Bud, or maybe even a rep from Streetscan can be the deliverer of the presentation of the, of the detail, and then, you know, and everybody has the same, you know, kind of benchmark, and then we can see which roads are really, you know?
Yeah, it's cool. It'd be easier to tell which ones aren't.
Yeah, but that's just a, that's just my suggestion proposal. Happy to, you know, put, just put it out there for discussion. You guys think that's a good idea or not?
I think that we should do it to, when we do the special Town Meeting, present it. And, you know, uh, the Mass Municipal Association has been advocating for years, uh, well, they successfully advocated about, uh, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago for Chapter Ninety to go from a hundred million to two hundred million dollars. Now, they're trying to get it up to three hundred million dollars.
The Mass will hold state.
And that, you know, that represents, for, for Dalton, that would bring it up from about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to about three hundred thousand dollars. So, three hundred thousand dollars, even if the town matched that with three hundred thousand dollars, that's, um, you know, one fortieth of twenty million.
Good August report.
You know, one thirtieth, anyway. So, it would be a thirty-year program. You know, one thirtieth, anyway, so it would be a thirty-year program to replace those streets.
Yeah. This is a
A title.
It's a title.
If you thought it, the transfer station was bad.
No, but, but data should, well, should drive decisions, you know?
Oh, I forgot to mention, we do have the staffs on the online sales.
Yeah, for the transfer station.
We don't have anything from the transfer station yet, but we thought we'd show you what it looked like. We'll get it done.
Can I say something in relation to the road situation?
Sure.
As you all know, we are embarking on this Dalton Division Road project, which has been in the works for, I don't know, six, seven years, and town has asked for requests for proposals from various engineering companies. It's come to my attention from various residents of Dalton Division Road that there is no sewer water in a large portion of Dalton Division Road, most notably between two thirty-five, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, this in town, right? There's, and I said there's a forty, forty house. Don't know where that is?
Yeah.
All the way up to the hill, top of the hill, five seventy-one, where obviously, there's no sewer or water between three, two thirty-five and five seventy-one. Now, they've been asking me, maybe other members of the board, or the town manager, if in this big rebuild of Dalton Division Road, is there going to be a sewer installed as they connect them and water? And I had to think about that for a long time, and I said, you know what, I don't know. I do not know. And Tom, the best you can ask, and the spec you set out for the Dalton Division Road rebuild, there are any provisions for sewer and water and unsoured areas.
What there is, is a requirement that the engineers designing the project consult with local sewer and water authorities. Me and I took two, two coordinating activities. So it's, it's, it would be up to the town when the engineer comes in to say, I want to coordinate with you about doing Dalton Division Road, to say, oh, yes, we have a plan to add sewer for water.
People might ask about that. It's a planning stage, but basically, when you, we select an engineering company, they will be, now we're asked to consult with Bud Law and yourself about availability, if possible, installation of sewer. Now, the water is tricky too, because that's the water district. Well, if they want to be involved with this, they have to provide their own engineering funds.
Well, as, as would we. We would have to fund the sewer going in.
Yeah, the sewer part.
Yeah.
They would have to fund the water. That's the way it worked out by the district. On the, who was the town rebuilding? It was a portion that didn't have water, and the sewer was adequate in some sections of it, so it was all replaced as part of a total rebuild. And this is where these, these people got that information and asked the, I'm sure they asked other people, are they going to be putting the sewer in? And what? The answer is they don't know. But now the answer is whoever's selecting. And when's it due, Dan Wilson?
Uh, it's next week. I mean, I think April, April next week, I'm not sure.
Just so, just so I'm clear, we're talking the same thing, we're talking about the rebuild that's on the, that's on the plane for twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, so, so that, that's just the road. But they, but they will be required to coordinate with both Dalton and Pittsfield officials about
So you, you just said, that's just the road. So you acknowledge that it doesn't matter to the other thing, other than the road and culverts and drains and things like that.
No, that would be up to the town to coordinate with them.
Okay.
If we funded that.
Right, we're not, we're not planning on adding sewer lines or water lines as part of the project that's been, that's being
That, it, it's the first time I've heard the suggestion.
Yeah, so, but what you're saying is that the coordination of the road construction will be with the sewer and water, if the sewer and water are doing any projects, we're not planning a sewer project as part of this, but should be, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, if you're ever going to do something like this, there's a substantial section of Dalton Division Road.
It's already time to do it.
Now's the time to do it, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, eighty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's already been a rule of thumb, you know, leave something out and then have to go back and beat up the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. And those people will have to complain. I don't know if they complained to you, Tom, or about the sewer. And it's, it's hard to figure out where the sewer goes up there. Nobody really knows because Pittsfield's involved. There would have to be some coordination with them. That sewer in that section that's left off may have to go down what's known as Skelley Drive. That's a little street, but it has the right grade for a sewer out towards Pittsfield.
So maybe we take John's, John's question and defer and send it to Bud to then evaluate and come back with a plan as part of that twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so we know what the sewer line is and what the, what the needs are on that road.
We would have to get an estimate for a design and a cost estimate. So we'd have to pay for a design and cost estimate to figure out whether or not we wanted to fund.
Yeah.
About point six hundred feet.
And I know I didn't Know what the, what sewer installation is per foot?
At, at least, at least I know that residents are responsible for their own hook-up.
Their service, to the, to the main, yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's important. And, you know, giving them a heads up would be necessary because whoever's on one side of the road wouldn't have to go under the road, and whoever was on the other side of the road would have to go under the road because the main will go down one side of the road on the matchway for a reason.
Well, it shouldn't be our side because we're paid for it.
All right, let's, um, let's add Dalton Division Road and sewer line to this first meeting in September, just for discussion, or?
Yeah, it was August eight, probably.
I think September's good.
Yeah, give my
Either vacation's over with and Bud, he grabbed the straight.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah. Sewer and water.
Yeah. Possible addition to the, possible addition to the engineering specs that are currently, were expected to receive. Well, so Streetscan, and thank you, Tom, for bringing us to, with the grass center thing. That was easy and stuff.
I guess I would ask, what portion of very poor eighteen miles Dalton Division comprise?
I don't know if they did that strictly because of proposal construction and your survey and land.
Yeah, it, it would have been done, I, I, I don't know. But we, we do have that data, it's in the program.
I'm sure it, it likely comprises percentage of it. How, how long is Dalton Division Road? Three miles?
Probably two. Yeah, so, so I don't know how many segments there is. And, you know, we, we do have a number of streets slated for, for repaving already.
That's already in the plan, yeah.
Because it could very well be on this list.
That list excludes state roads, just the town roads?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about this
Good question.
This, it excludes state roads, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, just that one.
All right, have a good night. Thanks, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, number ten, increase in the police detail fund.
Well, that was an item that Monstro had, apparently often run into trouble the end of the end of May with Carnival, because we have to wait until we get the payments in from the Carnival. But we've, we, we use up, this year we used up more than half of what was in the police detail fund for paying details of Carnival, and we didn't get the money until the following. So the officers had to wait a week for their detail fund.
Oh, this came up before.
Yeah, and Mark had proposed upping the amount we, we statute that fund.
Yeah. But you have to do that in the special town meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
The board agrees with it, I mean, I just
Something for a future warrant if the board wants to
In other words, it's not raising the hourly rate, it's all set according to negotiations, it's just availability of the
This just came up a couple of years ago, a part of the discussion, because we had officers waiting two or three weeks for the detail pay after they already did the work. And we decided back then that wasn't right. So they do their work, it should be in their next pay in the cycle. And then we chase the dollars. But it sounds like we can't do that because it's not in line on budget to pay out.
Oh, it is, we just don't have enough when some, when a big event like the Carnival comes along at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So they had to wait to get paid from, for the Carnival.
So it's be like a free cash transfer to this budget?
No, this would be an incorporation into next year's
You know how much is in there now? Kind of like a split budget to prevent these kind of, like, shortages.
Yeah, I think it's ten thousand now.
It would end up being another five thousand.
That would probably get us through what it got us through this year.
I'd like to, we're talking about millions, five thousand, hundreds.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a, make a motion if we defer this to the chief and have her come up with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah. He, he just asked for it to be a future agenda, and I, I forgot he was not going to
No, that's fine. That's fine. Is there a second on that motion to, to, okay, any discussion? Here now, in favor?
Aye. I think she should, maybe suggest, but I don't know if she should, she, you're asking, does Joey Quump have a figure?
Yeah, for, for her budget process.
The town manager?
Yeah, and do some kind of cash transfer, whatever, for town.
You know, just be an extra question.
Yep. Number eleven, skate park equipment. Mr. Asko, think this was yours?
Yeah. So the skate park equipment that, that was donated by Glenn Leidwall was placed in Chamberlain Park, a basketball court. It's in really poor shape, it's falling apart, it either needs to be repaired or I, I would imagine dispose of it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, you mentioned that before, I'm down every day, you're absolutely right.
It's dangerous too. I saw kids, you know, when I was there for softball games for my daughter, kids with their bare feet, you know, shorts on, sliding down it.
I think we should just ask.
I'd say probably pull it away, just get, get rid of it. I don't think the kids really use it anymore. I, I'd hate to see it get thrown away, could be repaired, but maybe we could at least get it out of there. And if we can't repair it, then certainly dispose of it. What do you think?
Yeah.
Ask Bud to just
Take it away. He may be able to use the plywood. For sale.
Yeah, maybe he could bring it to town garage property, I don't know if he wants to do that or not, or just dispose of it.
I got that old forty yards on the back, forty acres.
Sure you could put it there.
Set up a skateboard park that, you have to go down that hill a little bit.
Yeah.
Gravel.
Yeah.
Does anybody know the, the usage of it? That mean, that would be appropriate, like, the kids appropriately use it?
It's, it's too dilapidated at this point for real skateboarding use. The, the kids, they're skating around town, they have their own little mini things that they bring out from their garages, or they go to the Pittsfield Skate Park.
I go, it's pretty, I will, yes, Dan, it's, it's pretty rickety. It's still, it's still a place, they only put it there because they don't really place a play on it.
That's right. Are all the pieces bad or just some?
Well, because the plywood, just standard, three inch plywood, heavy plywood, it's been out in the weather for several years, so it started to, you know, heave and buckle and colesnails away and stuff like that.
Could be resurfaced.
The heaving and buckling could be, you know, an asset for skating, that's right. But the nail's not so much.
It could be resurfaced, you know, I could reach out to Glenn to it, and he donated, he probably doesn't want us to do it at this point, but to see, you know, hey, you know, we've got this equipment that's, at this point, not so usable, give the ideas. And also be willing to meet Bud there just to take a look at it together.
Yeah, I think Bud taking it away is the best idea.
There's always been an interest of a skateboard park, and I believe it's also in our master plan as well.
Yeah.
And so maybe we defer this skateboard park topic itself, itself, so we don't lose it, because it comes up periodically, and really put it into that open space recreation strategy. And then go for appropriate grants, a type of program, and Opus was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant they got for theirs. And
You know, there, there's a half basketball court at Chamberlain Park that isn't really
Yeah, that'd be a great spot for it.
Because, you know, talk about uneven surfaces.
Yeah.
The asphalt there is, is ridiculous.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great spot for it, plus the kids who are up there playing sports around that age of skateboarders as well, just observation, a little data observation, but, you know, but I, I just want to lose sight of it. Because it's been coming up periodically. We can't fund it right now, but maybe there's some recreation grants or things like that.
Yeah, there's a carver grant.
Yeah, absolutely.
For, for recreation. I don't think we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars skate park.
I don't either.
But if we had three or four classic designs that have, like, you know,
Yeah.
Some, some stairs, some railing, something like that, that would be
This is ten years ago, Pittsfield spent two hundred thousand dollars on just the equipment because they already owned the land.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to me, the best ones are made from concrete and a whole bunch of them, and they're, they're all imported. Is that right?
It's the way to go, concrete, definitely.
Yeah.
I'm in full support of exploring that further. I don't know, I know the Open Space Recreation Committee's priorities right now, it's really focused on pines.
Yeah.
It's a big thing, but
Well, maybe we just give it a grant for town planning, where it needs to fit, but I just don't want to lose sight of it.
Oh, right, well, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, that are on the agenda.
There are, there are.
Open space and
It's not, it's not going to bubble up to the top three, I can tell, I know that for sure. But just somewhere on the list, so we don't lose sight of it.
Sure.
See, number twelve, proposed select board, okay, so skate park equipment, do we need a motion on that to remove it? Okay.
No, I'll stop the question.
Okay. Number twelve, proposed select board and community meeting Tuesday, July twenty-six for police regionalization. Feasibility, can we call that feasibility? Because we're not, we're not making a decision on regionalization, we're talking about feasibility.
Study.
Feasibility study?
Discussion. Yeah, feasibility.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? And is there a time for that, Mr. Asko?
Uh, yes, our consultant has proposed five forty-five to six forty-five for a community meeting and seven o'clock for a select board.
Okay.
The original proposal was to have the Hinsdale and Dalton Select Boards meet together, and both the Hinsdale Town Administrator and I thought it would probably be better for the first meeting for the Dalton Select Board to meet with Dalton residents, Hinsdale, excuse me, Hinsdale residents, and have the, have the sort of coming together after towns themselves have kind of established a way of talking about it.
That's a good point.
That said, I think it's still a little bit up in the air, but that, that's, that's what we had expressed then. And, and we have lined up messages for this. So if anything, Hinsdale will be coming down to visit with us there.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to their chair, if there's, if no, if there's no objection from this board, I'm happy to engage in any conversations of planning as well, so.
Yeah, um, I, I, I got the sense that Hinsdale would, would be interested in talking more locally first
Yeah.
before entering into the broader conversation.
That's fine.
And, and I think that that would probably be better for Dalton too.
I agree.
It, the, you know, the, the sort of leadership teams are interested in it.
Yeah.
And other people may not be so, you know, starting to solidify the support of the community level, or at least the information would be, would be helpful, I think, before trying to bring people together.
Yeah. So, do we need a motion to accept that data, or is this information we already talked about?
Um, the, the only other thing I'd add is that I would take that opportunity to bring a draft of the, of a special town meeting warrant to the select board as well as the police regionalization item
Okay.
for your agenda. And there may be, you know, one or two miscellaneous things that we can take care of at that meeting as well.
Now, what would you say, what was the suggested timeframe for that thing?
Uh, for the community meeting from five forty-five to six forty-five.
The community meeting The community meeting, uh.
Police regionalization.
Right.
And then the select board would have a more focused discussion with a consultant after the community meeting, so that things that got brought up could be addressed at seven o'clock.
Okay, six four, uh, five forty-five, you said?
Yeah.
Five forty-five, then seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Why a Tuesday, not a Monday?
Because he's only coming down for one night, and, um, and, and he arranged that he's going to meet with the Dalton Police Department on Tuesday in various formations.
And with Tuesday's the consultant's schedule.
And then Wednesday he'll be meeting with Hinsdale in particular.
Okay. Great. Okay. Um, number thirteen, proclamation declared on August second, six to eight P M. National Night Out for, um, Dalton streets. And we have a memo from Chief Stroh, and we've attached a National Night Out proclamation, which I'll read to the record here with the info moment. National Night Out proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, N A T W, sponsored the National Community Building Campaign on Tuesday, August second, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Dalton to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U S territories and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is a annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhood safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in Dalton assist the Dalton Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out two thousand twenty-two. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of Dalton come together with police and work together to build a safer and more caring community. And now therefore we, the select board of town Dalton, do hereby call upon all neighbors of Dalton to join the Dalton Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support of National Night Out on Tuesday, August second, two thousand twenty-two. And if there's, um, a motion to accept this?
So will.
It's for a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. So further, let it be resolved that we, the select board of town Dalton, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August second, as National Night Out in Dalton. Hence, on this day, what is today?
July.
July eleventh, we have here on two, set our hands on causes sealed at town Dalton to be fixed.
I'll, I'll also note that they are closing South Carson at Main Street to School Street. That's in the memo. And the fire department will be giving away hot dogs. They are working with, uh, our health inspector to get the, uh, the hot dog.
Kind of ambiguous, I think, inspector.
So, uh, everything's going according to plan.
Great. Okay, excellent. Um, number fourteen, a town manager update.
Uh, in further police news, uh, the police department will be running an eight-week Citizens Police Academy at the Senior Center, starting Tuesday, September twenty-seventh. Signups will begin soon. Um, also in police news and, uh, the regionalization news, uh, the police department, I have been working with a consultant on gathering data, as well as setting up his first visit, which we covered earlier. Uh, he's asked for a wide scope of financial and organizational data, uh, which seems an excellent start to the study. He's really asked for an incredible amount of information, so, um, uh, I think we're going to get some very well-considered plan from him. Uh, for a town hall renovation update, our architect is calculating the costs of various renovation options for consideration uh, at the August eighth select board meeting, and seeing what can be done for a cost close to the original borrowing authorization. Uh, the main difference for a minimal approach is how to treat the reinstalled insulation, whether to have a thick poly barrier or a sheet rock barrier. Uh, the architect will provide a cost for both, as well as for encapsulating asbestos in the historical and health agent building inspector offices as an alternate to the bid. So the select board can see whether or not they want to offer those alternates part of the bid. Uh, regarding waiving the demolition and building fees for sixteen Golf Road, which was an item, uh, uh, not that long ago, a town council advised this morning that fees for the town may not, um, that the town may not waive permit fees without an accepted policy that allows it to do so. And if it waives these fees for a specific charity, this came up with Habitat for Humanity wanting it, these ways for the demolition of sixteen Golf Road. Um, it must do so for all nonprofit entities. I have drafted such a policy, and I figure I may as well hand it out now. Uh, and then we can consider it, uh, at the, uh, whenever you like, uh, or as, I just might anticipate if you like now. Uh, for a brief Walker Brook update, G Z A, our engineering consultant, is continuing to work on the hydrologic and hydraulic analysis, which should be done this month. G Z A reviewed the results of the C C T V inspection, the scoping of the Walker Brook culvert performed on May seventeenth, and is preparing a memorandum to summarize the results of the inspection. We expect a final memorandum and mitigation options list by the end of this month, and the resource delineation, geotechnical evaluation, and topographic survey, um, completed in August, along with draft preliminary design drawings, and a draft basis of design memo, overall, uh, an overall memo for that. We expect final preliminary design drawings by the end of September, as well as the final basis of design memo. Uh, Grant will have more on this with his quarterly report in August. And that's what I have for the update.
Great, thank you, Mr. Satchin. Any questions for the town manager? Hearing none, uh, any future agenda items? Hearing none. Items not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting, would you go ahead and take up this policy? If there's a motion to do so?
I don't want to study it.
You want to study it?
I mean, if you give it a blanket to anybody that calls themselves a charity for a building permit or a demolition permit, I don't think it's really a great idea for it.
Well, in the last paragraph, it does say any such.
Yeah, but I wanted to go home and read it.
Will be conditioned on the applicant's ability to provide documentation as to its recognized status with the Commonwealth or the federal as a nonprofit or charitable entity. So, uh, the only reason to do it now would be to speed up Habitat's demolition process, but we're going to be meeting July twenty-sixth, Tuesday, anyway.
Okay, well, I ask for your judgment.
If you have it for that.
Yep. Any other items not anticipated forty-eight, forty-eight hours before the meeting? Hearing none. Any remarks to the select board?
Yeah, I don't want to talk.
Mr. Bishop?
Is there, I probably should go into future agendas, to have some way of helping people fill out forms that when they don't have computer access and stuff, like for the building permits or something like that, people don't understand the terminology, this or, who, who do they go to? There used to be someone up in the office where they, she would help them fill out the permits and stuff.
So you had a resident recently that was going for a, um, was it a building permit, bud?
No, a sign.
A sign?
Yeah.
A sign? And they were instructed to, uh, go fill it online, but they're older citizens, they didn't know, they have computer access, they don't understand the process. And so some sort of service we.
I wonder if they helped here and seen or something.
Yeah, I guess that's what we're trying to figure out, where we, where we can communicate and direct them to, right?
Yeah, I mean, I saw tonight where everybody for licenses were very happy with the help. And that's what I think they need to, for some of these, that involve things like this. And a lot of people don't understand the terminology and stuff, so. I mean, you know, with conservation forms and stuff, there's a lot of, uh, terminology there people don't understand.
And it's probably, listen, it's probably going to be a handful, it's not a lot of people.
Yes, that could be a lot.
It might be one or two occasional, so, um, I'm kind of putting it on the spot here, sorry. But could we say, you know, just for help, could they come down and see you and kind of what?
That's fine, I mean, I'm not sure how much of building permit terminology I know.
No, it's just, it's just the online application, how to get on there and then have them fill out, you know, they should provide you with all the information. Yeah, and then if it gets overwhelming, then, uh, yeah, then maybe do the, maybe we can communicate to, uh, uh, please.
Uh, they wanted, you have to keep thinking.
Charlie.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe they can help you here as well.
Maybe they'll help.
What do you think, bud?
Yeah, that'd be great, anything, anything.
Maybe they'll do it, just tell them anything.
Why don't you get it on the agenda to talk about it?
Okay, so we'll put that on a future agenda?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Is, um, let's call it, how about resident assistance, um, for town services, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
It almost goes along with expedited, expedited funding.
Yeah. Is that another, another issue for agenda?
No, we already have, um, expedited.
Oh, you, okay.
But, you know, it's just helping people through the process.
Yeah.
It's the real problem.
Yeah.
The process.
Okay. Uh, any other remarks on the select board?
Yeah, Joey, just been sitting here and thinking about this pair of troopers that drive me, and, uh, just what aspects have been troubling me. I don't think this board, the town manager, the police chief, or anybody else has the authority to take funds out of the police budget or designate it to use for a private event. That money was appropriated by the town man, I mean, the town meeting in this one for one specific purpose. Police protecting from town violence. But I, you know, you want to say all this, all Mr., I think I know Paul though. You know, it's hard as in the right place, but, you know, we just, there's certain things we cannot do with the town as one of them, and I think this is one of them. And, uh, so that's why I suggested, hey, we could have a fundraiser. Looks like it's going to be about three hundred dollars per town, say, five cops, fifteen hundred dollars. You know, we'll get a raise out of it, because this, we do this and use the police for another private for this event, you know, with a real importance that's ending.
That's, that's why I was suggesting focusing on volunteers as well. Because it, it, it is not a use that's been authorized by town.
Yeah, we can, we can have you do a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, that's all quite likely that the guy's proposal, great, she was only agreeing a bit.
You know, we threw out, threw out the call for volunteers from the surrounding towns and the sheriff's office and for this event, and you probably get, you know, some guys to stand up, but, but absolutely, if there's money coming out, we can't, there has to be money coming in to pay that to a point.
Yep, so, and, uh, you know, I'm sure, he's a, I mean, he's a pro as a two or three officers. You know, and they're part of this, I mean, he certainly could provide a couple of bodies that are actually, you know, trained in this matter. And, uh, he did have to work with the chief, I mean, about traffic management in the town that day. It's a big issue. Closing off streets like he suggested, you know, you can close off streets, a big thing.
And it, it sounds as though somebody got an idea and, and it expanded and, and became a much larger thing than the original idea.
It's, it's, it's been growing for quite a little bit, that's for sure.
Because to come to us in the middle of July, asking about something that's, or early July and mid-August is a little late.
Less than a month away.
That's asking, you know, Glenn to have a come up with an emergency operations.
Yeah.
Three weeks.
I mean, uh, I don't, I, in, how are we going to come up with us? We can't, it's impossible. Paul's going to have to provide some kind of estimate of, uh, people that would, uh, be viewing this event. How many, I mean, two thousand, five thousand, twenty thousand? I mean, you have to know all this stuff.
That said, it has a great potential for a Dalton event.
Yeah.
So it's great to support it, but, um, and I think, you know, next year might be a little better organized, a little more advanced, and I might do a little more advanced funding.
I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure they've done these events, it, well, it sounds like they've done it at different towns across the country, and they probably have some trends in, in, in average attendance for a town, six thousand, you know, how many come in? Was it triple your population before, how does it look like, right?
Yeah.
Um, because remember when they did the mask, um, when COVID first hit and at money management, they were giving away the masks, what kind of traffic that created, right? So, um, they just need to get that plan together. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure, you know, our team will step up and figure something out here, and, you know, but definitely should get ahead to Mr. Bull's point about the fundraisers and pay for those services.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It probably, like you said, I can raise four thousand dollars overnight, or Friday overnight, for the, the paper, the airplane. Well, we need to raise another two thousand to pay for volunteer.
So I get another four.
Or something.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of people in town would step up and put some, do a GoFundMe, it'll be, it'll be ten thousand dollars before the end of the week.
Yeah, so I don't think, yeah, and I know, I'm guessing it should be worth anybody's help, they're saying they would ever let this, uh, come.
Would ever let this go by.
Yeah.
I think, well, it's, it's not an authorized expense, and it's aiding a private entity.
Are you able to volunteer for D C? I guess that's a procedural question. I don't, are you, are officers able to volunteer for D C? Look and pay, say, I wait and pay for this event because I want to volunteer?
Um, details are, are private contracts between officers and, and.
So they can do whatever they want. If they want to volunteer their time, they can.
Joey. Uh, the, the, they have to authorize their, their use of uniform.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in a, it's a territory here.
Yeah.
The police are a unit.
Yeah, and, yep.
Part of their policies is what they do, they get reviewed first of all.
Sure.
So you can't just say you can volunteer either. And I don't think the union even let them volunteer. Now, I'm not the best president. See, uh, it's, it's sticky wicked, eh? Or point yourself. I mean, this has come up before. You know, the, the, the police don't march in the annual memorial day parade?
They do. They do. They were this year.
They did, huh?
They're right behind us.
Big, great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
They're dealing with that.
Well, in any case, he, he was coming forward to see what was possible, but I think now we're pretty clear that that's likely not going to be possible.
Yeah, the, the.
That, that's my understanding. And I think he came away knowing, okay, I think that's not happening.
Okay.
I think on the permitting side, I think, you know, um, it's, it's pretty quick work, they have to make this. And certainly will be, uh, supportive as much as we can.
Yeah. Anything additional remarks?
Yeah, did everyone get a letter from, uh, Dalton resident Al Nadeau?
Yes.
No, I haven't, I must be at the town hall.
Well, I just wanted to mention, you know, he wrote a letter, um, commenting on the escalation of costs at town hall uh, for the renovations and asbestos abatement. I just wanted to, uh, I don't have the letter in front of me, but what his main suggestion was that it's obvious that the old building, or the current town hall is, uh, can't conceivably be a long-term, viable, uh, location for town hall and police, long-term. Uh, and he suggested that we look at this property, uh, right behind us, um, and not sell it. At, at least, keep it, you know, as town-owned property for some future use, and that was it. And obviously do what we need to do to keep town hall open where it presently is.
He, I believe he was suggesting building a municipal building that would house all municipal apartments.
It's a little better suggestion, but, um, I think the selling point is this property, this parcel here, you know, what are we actually doing with that? And that, that would be my question at this point. I know we had authorized selling it to subdivision and building houses.
I think we're waiting for the Walker Brook.
So, again, so that, that's my main comment really is, let, definitely, I know we're not selling it at this time. So currently we own it and we'll continue to, um, but I, I definitely am in support of sitting on that parcel while we go through the Walker Brook process and then, um, figure out if there's another use that, uh, such as some future.
I think the, I mean, the straps, okay, it's not the town hall road.
Roads, yeah.
But I agree with you, with you, Dan, and so. But I agree with you, with you, Dan, and so do all the neighbors, our buddy neighbors, you mentioned to me several times, that this land is too valuable to the town of Dalton, they'll be selling it for a few small building lots. Yeah, seventy, the building lots that were proposed are seventy feet, a hundred. Those are like tiny houses, huh? And it started out with six, but I'm sure it's down to like three now because part of it is going to be a what, like, it's not going to be a viable entity. We should definitely sit on this property for future generations. Hey, someday, you might have to build a new governmental center or safety center.
Even another park.
Or parks.
You know, open spaces.
I would, I would stand on my suggestion of a miniature golf course, and, and I will not
That's funny.
Ah, hey.
That sounds like a private enterprise.
No, municipal, you know, the municipal golf course is all over the place, but aren't there being
Let's, let's do this. Mr. Dalton Nadeau is, is always engaged. I always appreciate his engagement. He's, he's always on top of, of, of things in town. If we could, maybe Mr. Richardson could reach out to Mr. Nadeau where I can and just, well, just, just for the, for the town hall feasibility, if he wants to get engaged in that program, we'll, we'll kick that off, so.
But I answered his question. I said, like, he was mostly concerned to start with about the money we were spending on the renovations. I said, Al, as a matter of fact, last night, this select board put a halt to the extended expenditure to the town hall and sticking, now we're sticking to the original plans. I think the select board probably cut back probably a million, three hundred thousand. So then went on to, hey, could be a good place for a governmental center someday or part of the department, police department, et cetera, or a park, or just open space, like a town square.
Who knows? But it's important that, you know, when we get those letters, that the residents are heard and responded to. So you have spoken on it?
No, I, no, for you, honestly.
You're right.
You, you responded back about things that they've done in other towns, providing schools and stuff, et cetera. Yeah, he was happy if somebody responded.
Okay, that's good. Thanks, John.
I know Al pretty good.
Any other remarks for, for the wood?
Oh, one more. All the lights that are left on at the La Conna Regional High School building, that has come up in resident comments, not formally in a letter or email, but more informally, as I've run into people or even confronted them on social media, for example. So the question is, why are that amount of lights always on at the building? I know we don't control that, but we do fund it as a town, as a member town. You know, can we save money by cutting down on energy consumption?
Save money, save energy, save light pollution.
Whatever, yeah.
I can draft a letter.
Just a request for information and clarification, I think, would be, would be good there.
Yeah, I believe somebody said the electric bill went up thirty thousand dollars.
I wonder why.
The budget, the budget, yeah.
I wonder why. I mean, the building is obviously, and one, you know, much larger, has probably many more lights, but the fact that they're left on, literally, I think I drove by at eleven thirty at night, one night, and they were all on.
Good. Could be security.
Yeah, I mean, I want to know what the reasons are, I suppose, as a member of town.
Yeah.
Good question.
Okay. Any other remarks? Okay, hearing none. Announcements, tax collector assessors, health agent, and building inspector now located across from the town hall at the old Berkshire Bank building and at four eighty-eight Main Street. Annual carp permits, bag stickers, and recycling-only carp permits for the transfer station are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. Town Dalton currently has a following job opportunities, an assistant accountant, a highway mechanic, and a recording secretary. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. The formal committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers, the ADA committee, the beautification commission, the board of health, conservation commission, council and agent, Dalton cable advisory committee, Dalton green committee, finance committee, memorial day committee, open space and recreation committee, stormwater management commission, traffic commission, and the waste management and recycling committee. If interested, please reach out to the town manager's office by calling four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two zero two. And the next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, no?
Well, now it's Tuesday.
Now it's Tuesday, July twenty-sixth. Right?
Yeah.
July twenty-sixth with a community forum regarding the police regionalization study, feasibility study, from five forty-five P M to six forty-five P M. And a select board meeting following at seven P M, same evening, at Nessus Regional. Okay, I got all the headlines from Alyssa, so I guess I got that right. And with that, okay, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And a good night, Al. Thank you.